Is everyone ready to go live in a second?
Yes.
Did the YouTube link get posted, Ms. Ushi?
No, it's not on YouTube. They're having a YouTube problem tonight, Danny.
Oh, I missed that.
So it will be on Facebook.
Facebook?
And even if you don't have an account, all you gotta do is click the link that Eric is gonna put everywhere that the YouTube link looks.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay.
It's interesting. It even says in the top left corner that we are live on Facebook.
On YouTube?
At least for me, it does.
Call to order the April 30th, 2020 regular board meeting. Row call of board members.
Mr. Abidrabo.
Here.
Ms. Basford.
Here.
Ms. Beltran. Mr. Canova.
Here.
Mr. Daly.
Here.
Mr. Casper.
Here.
Mr. Pacenti.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Danny.
Here.
We have a forum.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America.
Into the Republic. For which it stands. One nation.
Please be seated. Mr. Casper, can I have you read the mission statement?
Yes. The mission of the Clifton School District in an open and reciprocal community partnership is to provide all students with a quality education to develop the skills necessary to become literate lifelong learners who are responsible and productive citizens contributing to a democratic society in an ever-changing world.
Thank you. Next order of business is a reading of the open public meeting statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Clifton Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place there posted at the city clerk's office, Clifton Public Library Administration Building, Senior Citizen Nutrition Center, on cable TV, in the local press, on the district's website, and mailed to presidents of parent-teacher organizations. This meeting will be taped recorded in accordance with policy 0168. Next order of business. There are no awards and presentations. Next order of business is adoption of minutes. Can I have a motion to adopt the April 16, 2020 regular board meeting?
Motion.
Second.
And the 4/16/2020 executive board meeting. Motion by Vice Chair Basford, second by Mr. Daly. Any revisions? Seen none. Row call.
Mr. Abidrabo.
Yes.
Ms. Basford.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Pacenti.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
There are no communications and announcements. Yes, sorry. There are no communications and announcements. There is no first reading of policy. And next order of business is presentation of reports from administration advisory committees and special meetings. We will have a presentation by Mr. Uchi, the Business Administrator, regarding the final Clifton Public Hearing on the 2021 budget presentation. And then Ms. Kusilevich, the CUSAC placement presentation for the Board of Ed for 2019-2020. So right now, Mr. Ushi?
We're gonna do that in reverse order if that's okay.
Okay, fine. Ms. Kusilevich?
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to switch the screen to the presentation right now. Good evening, Commissioners of the Board, community members. This evening's presentation is the follow-up of a presentation that was begun in the fall. And it is about our New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum Placement as a High-Performing District. What is NJCUSAC? This is the Department of Education's Monitoring and Self-Evaluation System for Public School Districts. And districts must maintain a minimum of 80% in each of five areas. Sorry, just having a couple of technical difficulties with the shared screen. Okay. Clifton's timeline began in October of this past year when our Steering Committee met. In November, we presented our self-evaluation to the Board. And then in February, the County Superintendent and his office personnel came in to do an onsite evaluation. We were just recently notified of our placement, and today is our public report about this placement. There are five components to the CUSAC measurement process. They are the areas of instruction, fiscal management, governance, operations, and personnel. Various central office personnel chaired each of these committees. In the area of instruction and program, there are 16 areas in which we are measured for every content area from kindergarten, pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, as well as all ancillary support programs, performance reporting, support services, and assessments. The fiscal indicators range anywhere from financial monthly reports to county office approval of projects, contracts, our budgeting calendar, reimbursement, how we handle federal grants, all buildings and grounds-related issues, and everything related to our business office. Under governance, we are measured for how we implement our board policies, how the Board performs its duties, review of all corrective action plans, taking action only upon the chief school administrator's recommendation, that we have a transparent budget in place, which is what we're going to be seeing shortly, right after this presentation, and that we provide services for all of the federally required programs, that the Board implements Oprah, and basically all actions of the Board. For operations, we look at all student personnel-related components. This is the entire climate and culture of our school district, our policies and interventions for student conduct, attendance, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use, HIB, a safe school environment with a positive school climate, transportation of students, health services, missing and abused students, and all student data. In personnel, we were evaluated on how we evaluate our teaching staff, the professional learning that we provide to teachers, how we manage certifications and staffing, as well as observation and supervision of the entire district and program. So we completed our self-evaluation, submitted that, and then we underwent our full review by the County Superintendent. When we submitted our scores in the fall, we rated ourselves. And then the county came back based on their investigation. And they scored us at an 82% in instruction and program, 94% in fiscal management, and 100% in all other areas. As a result of those scores, we receive our district placement. The district is satisfied at least 80% of our weighted indicators in each of these five areas. And thus pursuant to NJAC 6A30-4, the Clifton Public Schools has been designated as a high-performing district and is certified as such for providing a thorough and efficient system of education for a period of the next three years. This would not have been possible without the members of our Steering Committee, who helped guide the process this school year. But it truly would not have been possible without all of the members I'm about to name now. And I would like to give a sincere thanks and express my gratitude on behalf of myself, the administration, and the Board, to the Board itself, to our CUSAC Steering Committee, and all of Clifton's teachers, certificated support staff, paraprofessionals and aides, secretaries, custodians, maintenance, cafeteria staff, transportation staff, supervisors, administrators, parents. Without this entire community of learners, we would not have been able to attain the designation of a high-performing district. So hashtag Clifton connects, hashtag high-performing district.
Good job.
Thank you, Ms. Kusilevich. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for Ms. Kusilevich?
I have a quick one, please.
Mr. Casper.
Just, do you know the discrepancy that the county had for our financial portion, Mrs. Kusilevich?
The county is very detail-oriented, and some of the, I can turn that over to Mr. Uchi to answer.
It was, I was just wondering, was there anything major than they had found? Okay. All right, that was it.
Simple things. You can lose points in CUSAC. You could lose an entire section in curriculum if you have something cited wrong in a curriculum guide. Similar things with finance. You might have your, a presentation or particular report formatted in a way different from what the county is looking for, and that is enough to lose an entire section.
Okay. It basically was how resolutions are worded for our federally funded programs.
Any other Commissioners have questions?
Just, just, not a question, but really another terrific job by an outstanding staff, and I'd like to congratulation, make congratulations to the administration and the entire staff. It takes, it takes all 1,500 of us to make this thing work. So, thank you.
Ms. Kusilevich, great job to all. Did the county give you suggestions on how to reword those resolutions for going forward? Did they give you a corrective action plan?
No, there's no corrective action plan, simply a suggestion about how to reword. Really what it means, we tend to do our salaries and hiring for federal programs twice a year at the beginning and at the end. And they would like us to be making the changes more frequently. So whenever there's a minor change, you may be seeing the same resolution over and over throughout the year. At the same time, for our summer programs, we tend to put everyone on one resolution for the sake of space, listing all the different programs, and they would like each of those to be separated out. So that will add probably, you know, 20 pages repeating the same people's names over because they perform multiple duties in the summer.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioners?
Thank goodness we went paperless.
Okay, Mr. Ushi, if you'd like to present on the budget.
Sure. Let me give you just a moment to share my screen. Okay. Good evening, Commissioners, and everyone virtually attending tonight's meeting. I'm Mike Ushi, the District's Business Administrator. Quickly, I just want to introduce Dr. Robert Tozzi, the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Teigen, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Kusilevich, Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, who will jump in during this presentation regarding some curricular highlights. Also, I would like to formally introduce Mr. Tomaskowicz, our new Assistant BA, Business Administrator, to his first board meeting. This is the public hearing on the final budget for 2021. The Board will have a resolution presented to them tonight to approve the submission of the 2021 budget to the county office. I wanted to start the presentation with a quick snapshot of the school district's operations to try to put into perspective how large of a district we are. The Clifton Board of Education has 23 facilities consisting of 14 elementaries with an annex, two preschools are Clifton Early Learner Academies, two middle schools, an extremely large high school, the Administration Building, transportation garage, and stadium. During normal activities, on a daily basis, we transport over 2,200 students in district with 51 buses and vans. The district employs nearly 1,600 full-time employees and has 10,948 resident students on roll. Are, we have 28 different sports, 53 teams, 73 coaches, two on-staff athletic trainers, with over 1,250 student athletes. Also, we offer over 150 co-curricular activities and clubs throughout the district. The district will follow this budget schedule for the 2021 submission for the Department of Ed. The average budget was in the record on Tuesday, April 21st. Tonight's the public hearing on the budget. And it's due to the county honor before Thursday, May 14th. Also, the user-friendly budget is posted on the front page of the district's website, which is required to be posted within 48 hours of this meeting. Now I'll go to the main focus points of the budget. On the revenue size side, the budget calls for no tax levy increase from the 1920 school year to the 2021 school year. There is a state increase of $7,796,042, or 19.42% from the current year. The budget contains the use of $2,625,611 of, from a district's unassigned fund balance, which is essentially a surplus account, which is capped at 2% of our budget by the state. There is a withdrawal from capital reserve, which I'll go into those two projects later on in the presentation, and a withdrawal from maintenance reserve for general preventive maintenance. And lastly, on the revenue side, is the semi-program or Special Education Medicaid Initiative of $314,000, and miscellaneous revenues of approximately $850,000, which that consists of interest, facility rentals, school fines, insurance dividends, and refunds. On the appropriation side, the budget maintains all current staffing and programs with the addition of eight instructional staff members. Ms. Kusilevich will go into more detail about how the budget maintains and expands programs and supports instruction throughout the district on the next couple of slides. But before that, we have 118 special education placements in private schools and county special services, 704 students at PCTI or the VOTAC. One of the biggest increases in any budget area or line is the increase in charter school tuition, which comes directly from the Department of Education. It increased over $1 million, or 15.17% from the current year. So while the district received a significant increase in state aid, there were also a significant increase in charter school tuition. I'm also gonna go into a five-year trend analysis of the charter school tuition later on in the presentation. And finally, all salaries and employee health benefits. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Kusilevich for the next couple of slides.
The budget that we're looking at today does allow something that is really very important, and this time away from live, in-person school highlights it. So I'm very grateful to the Board for getting us to where we are now with the high school one-to-one initiative between the Board and Dr. Robert Tozzi. The high school was able to be one-to-one prior to opening where we are now with this distance learning model. The budget that you are looking at allows us to complete a one-to-one Chromebook initiative in grades three through 12. Thankfully, we're at nine through 12 right now, so that is helping us. The budget that we're looking at infuses technology and 21st century skills across all of our programs. We'll continue to expand the defined STEM program, supports the differentiation of instruction for our very diverse student body, as well as supports our excellent fine and performing arts program K through 12, maintains our core literacy and math programs, and supports the instructional teaming that we have in grade six through nine to create smaller learning environments, support students, and transition students into high school more successfully. We are expanding up to 17 career concentrations in our high school academies in the areas of STEM, careers, and fine and performing arts. And we also have our, and maintain our extensive dual enrollment opportunities at Clifton High School. Components of this budget support our growing PBSIS program for social emotional learning, which continues even now during this time of distance learning, as well as our extensive sports and extracurricular programs. Mr. Uchi, thank you. The additional staff also that are in this budget do support the programs that we have. We have an additional elementary music teacher to help provide general music instruction specials across our elementary schools while still supporting our strings and instrumental lessons. We have an additional high school STEM teacher to provide electives for our now 17 career concentrations in our high school academies, and an additional ESL teacher to meet instructional mandates required by bilingual code, as well as five additional special education teachers to support the least restrictive environment for special needs students. And those include two preschool disabled classes because we are expanding the duration of our preschool disabled programs, an additional middle school autism class and high school autism class as our students age up, as well as a special educational behaviorist to support our students' ability to respond and learn in classrooms.
Thank you. Our district's total balanced budget is $202,720,381, which is comprised of the general fund that contains the operating budget and capital outlay budget. The majority of the capital outlay budget is comprised of the withdrawal from capital reserve for the two construction projects. And the special revenues budget, which is all our federal grants and state entitlements, the district receives and does service. Here is an overview of the general fund revenue sources. As I stated before, the tax levy has no increase from the current year and stands at $134,259,260. State aid increased by 19.42%. Extraordinary aid is budgeted slightly less than the current year to a more actual number. We do not have any excess or designated surplus in the budget. However, the Board is recommending to use on-aside fund balance, which is part of the district surplus I brought up before, as tax relief. Withdrawals from capital and maintenance reserve, miscellaneous revenues. The revenues seem very similar from 1920 to 2021, which shouldn't make sense. However, it's because of the significant amount of capital reserve the Board withdrew in the current 1920 budget to do five major projects, such as the windows replacement at Christopher Columbus and Science Labs at the high school. And just to note, approximately 71% of the district's total revenue is funded by the tax levy, while 25% is funded by state aid. Here's an overview of the general fund appropriations broken down into major categories of the budget. I won't go through every line, however, everything is relatively consistent with our current year, except for the major increase to the charter school budget line item. Projected charter school enrollment budget comes directly from the DOE with the release of the state aid numbers, which is typically at the end of February. Also, to put the total budget into perspective, salaries and employee benefits consist of more than 75% of the total operating budget. I will quickly go over a five-year trend of our major revenue sources, being the tax levy and state aid. And then on the following slide, I'll show a five-year trend of the charter school and VOTAC enrollments. Here is a trend of the district's tax levy and state aid. For the past three years, the Board has presented less than a 1% tax levy increase and has not gone over 2% since the cap has been instituted. The 1718 budget seems to go over 2%, however, that's only because of bonds maturing through the debt service. In any given fiscal year, the debt service maturing reduces the debt service tax levy, allowing the Board to go higher than a 2% in the general fund, which allows for taxpayers to only feel an impact of 2% because of the bond return. When it comes to state aid, the district has seen significant increases in state aid over the past four budgets, which includes the 2021 budget. However, the 1819 and 1718 budget, the district received what the state called July surprises, meaning we didn't know the true revised state aid until after the budget process was already complete. This allowed the Board to use unbudgeted revenue in subsequent years' budgets as tax relief. The increases in state aid come from the state trying to equalize the State Funding Reform Act, or the SAFRA formula it's called, because Clifton has been so significantly underfunded since the state aid formula came to be. In the next four or five years, the formula will be fully funded. That is what the state is saying. Clifton would receive approximately $74 million in state aid instead of the $47 million we are receiving if the SAFRA formula was fully funded. Here's a five-year trend of the charter school budget, which is based on enrollment. 2020 to 2021 budget numbers are projections approved by the Department of Ed that the district is required to budget for, for compliance purposes. The actual enrollment counts are realized during the October 15th ASSA audit, or the application for school state aid. At that time, the budget numbers increase or decrease during the school year. Typically, the projected enrollment amount is much higher than the actual enrollment amount. Over the past four years, the charter school enrollment has had drastic enrollment increases approved by the state with the budget increasing from approximately $2.4 million to $7.7 million, or 252 students to 635 students in a five-year span. Here is a five-year trend of the vocational school in Passaic County, or PCTI. The projected budget next year seems to be plateauing from prior years. Basically, the county and district agree on a budget amount every year for PCTI, and the district pays that amount regardless of enrollment. However, after the school year is complete, district is either refunded or billed in the subsequent year's budget for any increases or decreases in the average daily enrollment throughout the school year, and this is all verified internally and by our auditors. Here are the capital projects that are planned in the 2021 budget. They include a school 15 roof replacement and the school 17 building management system replacement. The bid awards are actually on this agenda for board approval, and both projects came in significantly under budget. Here's a quick overview of the special revenue budget, which consists of our non-public state entitlements and all the programs the district receives. For arbitrary purposes, state and federal grants anticipate a 15% reduction from the current year. The district has completely transitioned from the federally funded preschool expansion grant to the state-funded education aid grant. I would like to note that the preschool education aid grant requires general fund contribution, is what they call it, in order to receive all those state funds, the $4,826,000 for regular education preschool. The general fund contribution is a budget line that already had existed for education of preschool disabled inclusion students. But now it must be transferred into special revenue by law. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Kusilevich one more time, and she's gonna go over Now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kuslevich one more time and she's going to go over. All the federal grants.
Good evening. We have a number of federal grants. These are primarily this listing are primarily entitlement grants. The Perkins Grant, which is a very small amount, supports our C T E program at the high school in the area of marketing. It's a small amount that helps support our marketing lab. The Title One Funds provide instructional remediation extended day, Saturday and summer programs for our Title One students. The Title Two Program supports teacher preparation, training and effective instruction. Title Three allows us to provide a summer and after school program for our over seven hundred English language learners across the district. And the Title Four Program supports social emotional learning and advanced programs. The I D E A is the basic and preschool is the federal aid that provides some defraying of costs of special education programs across the district. And the preschool education aid is another entitlement at this point. Initially, it was a competitive grant that has now become entitlement aid. Based on enrollment, of course, and it provides a fully inclusive preschool program for over five hundred students. Still on an income eligibility and first come first served basis. The twenty first century grant described herein represents a federal grant that we have for wraparound after school and summer programs. Serving students at schools four, twelve and seventeen.
Thank you. Here's a quick overview of the debt service budget. The debt service tax levy is dropping by six thousand four hundred dollars from the nineteen twenty. But the remaining debt service reflects one bond that does not fully mature until the twenty four twenty five school year. Which is the which was the high school annex project, the but which is now still a B are the preschool. So this slide would have explained the tax impact, but the board is putting forth a budget with a zero point zero percent tax levy increase. Therefore, there's not much to discuss since there'll be no increase to school related taxes from the nineteen twenty to the twenty twenty one school year. And that concludes my presentation, Ms. Danny. Board members have any questions for me or Janita, we're happy to answer.
I have a question.
Stop sharing my screen real quick.
Ms. Danny?
Yes.
Did any citizens pose a question via email for the budget? That's all we're going to next for the public recognition of the budget only.
So I received some public comments, but none related to the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Danny.
Dr. Robert Tozzi.
I would just like to thank Mr. Usee for all of his hard work and putting this budget together, putting a two hundred and two million dollar budget together is certainly no. Piece of cake and and for this congratulate this board on putting forth a budget with a zero percent tax increase. Especially during times like this, I think it's very important. This board is always conscientious of the taxpayer, so. Thank you, Mr. Usee and your staff for doing such a great job putting this budget together.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Daley.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. Just a two comments really for the public because. I think all the board members and certainly the staff is aware of this. We are are in uncharted waters at this time. The governor has stated that he is moved the budget passing from the due June thirtieth to September thirtieth. We are aware that there's significant losses in revenues. That the state has realized as a result of the shutdowns. Did due to the Corona pand- pandemic. We don't know where that will end up, but. We are cognizant of it. We are cognizant of a lot of things that may happen. But we don't have a crystal ball, so we use the tools that we had at hand to develop this budget. And and as such, we are hoping that everything holds serve, but we won't be surprised. If things do change and we won't know that really until September. Well, after our budget's in effect, so it's it's unusual for all districts in the state because we don't know. We do not know where the state is going to make just adjustments if there's this significant. Fall down of of revenues that the state has planned on. The second point is again with the charter school and the cost of running that. We will talk about a case that we have with against the Department of Education related related to. Charter school enrollment, give the details, but the bottom line is. This sucks away revenue from our ability to even further upgrade our learning. For our students, this affects our students in the seats. I will comment after we've had an executive session and maybe not tonight. But on how that impacts every student, especially the average student. You would the superintendent and the staff along with the board, I believe, would like to put more resources. To do even a better job, especially especially for our average and those students who are struggle a bit with our city. We have a great. System here. We know we could do better, but we we don't live on thin air. We live on resources. So we make our best judgment collectively. But do not be surprised if you're hearing in September or some thereabouts that. Adjustments need to be made of some sort because this is totally out of the control of not only our board, but all the boards of education in the state of New Jersey. So I just want to pre-warn everybody that. We are very happy with the budget, but things may change that are totally, totally beyond our control. We don't have the ability to put rainy day money away. We are restricted by law of only having two percent, even though. Vocational schools can sock away six percent of their budget. So we have a very, very short streak, so we've planned and worked our budget the best we can. Under under the law and the resources that the state has given us. So that'll conclude my comments, but I just wanted to make sure everybody out there in the public understands. That we're entering uncharted waters and significantly uncharted waters as we go forward in upcoming months.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, we've gone to the public recognition of the budget. But as Mr. Usee stated, there were no comments related to the public recognition of the budget. So I'd like to move to the next order of business, which is the adoption of the twenty 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 one final budget. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second motion by Mr. Daley, second by Mr. Casper. Discussions. Row call.
Mr. Abidrabo.
Yes.
Ms. Bassford.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Pacenti.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Danny.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next order of business is the board committee reports. And we do have a policy committee.
The policy committee, hold on. I'm turning the wrong button on, sorry. The policy committee met April fourteenth at twenty twenty at five P M. Myself. Mr. Commissioner Canova, Commissioner Smith, Board Attorney, Gili Tiaras. Administration was Dr. Danny Robitazzy. Mark Teigen, Mike Usee and Janita Kuchelovich. This was a virtual meeting. We talked about Strauss Ismay. Can you guys hear me? Okay. No mandate, Strauss Ismay policies are updated at this time. Number two was the district's funding for instructional program. Discussion was held about policies to re-task. Selected staff members to seek corporate donations for school initiatives. What attorney Mascutierrez will research if this is allowable under circumstances such funding. Fundraising outreach could take place. The action was informational. Number three, distance learning policies. A discussion will be held if any district policies need to be revised due to distance learning. N J D O E approved all distance. District instance learning plans based on existence policies for home instruction. Which were submitted to the New Jersey Department of Ed Passaic County Office. The current grading policy also applies as is since changes that have been considered to accommodate distance learning. Grading exists in regulations. Grade six to twelve will be following the same grading. To what is currently in place. Major testing will not be given. And the current regulations allow for students to be accused from the final final quarter benchmark exams. Elementary grading will be used will still be reviewed. Options for pass fail already exist. Should the district choose to move in that direction for younger grades. Once the teacher committee finalized grading accommodations, parents will be notified. That action was informational. The meeting adjourned at five forty five P M. Respect respectfully submitted Mark Teigen. Any questions?
Was I at that meeting, Mrs. Bassford?
Yes, Mr. Mr. Casper, I apologize. Yes, you are.
Yeah, we, okay.
You have to be amended.
Any other questions? Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Next order of business is the public recognition, and since this is a virtual meeting, Mr. Usee will read into record. The comments stated by members of the public.
I received four public comments. I'm going to just read them in the order I received them. First is Ms. Elia Veras, eleven Portland Ave. Kids, kids need computers or tablets to work from home. Some families like me only have one computer for three kids enrolled at school. Parents are not working and now we have to choose between buying food or to buy a computer so our child could finish the school year. Please, we need help from the school district. Next is Ms. Lori Lallam.
Ms. Soji, can I? I'm sorry, can I comment on Ms. Danny? May I comment on that, please? I'd like to answer that parent.
Okay.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank that parent for for reaching out to us. We will, we will be reaching out to her to offer whatever assistance we can. I just want the board to to know that thankfully, we are one to one with devices at the high school. At the middle school, we have identified that are both of our middle schools, we have identified those families who we believe needed. Devices and we have contacted them and made appointments for them to pick up devices. We just, we didn't have enough for every single student. And a lot of our students do have devices, but those who we knew, we did try to contact them and get those devices. We are now, as of our education committee meeting that we had last night, we are now. Implementing a plan to identify students at the elementary level who are in need of devices. For the record, the device is not mandatory at the elementary level. The packets will suffice. We do understand that. That it doesn't replace what we do on a regular school day. Having a device does open up some more options, online programs that we have. However. We will be identifying those students who 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 need a device and working on getting getting those out very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Next is Lori Lallama. She's the C E A president in Clifton. The Clifton Education Association Pride Events were successful. We had lunch catered for the Clifton Fire Department from April twentieth to the twenty third, which included all. Of the fire stations as well as the Clifton Fire Headquarters. Clifton Police Department received their catered dinner on April twenty first and April twenty eighth for all four shifts. Saint Mary's General Hospital received a catered lunch for both ships too. We also work together with Wayne Education Association to buy iPads to donate to Preakness Nursing Home in Wayne. This will enable families to communicate to their loved ones before they pass away, since no one is permitted in the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Usee. Next order of business.
I'm sorry, there's, there's two more, Ms. Danny.
Okay.
This is from. Michael Chalino. He write from one seven seven South Valley Road in West Orange. He writes, I am a teacher at school twelve in the Clifton Public Schools. Also, I was a coordinator for Saturday Academy this year. I request content for tonight's virtual board meeting. I have attached a report how we could reopen schools. I have a bachelor's science degree from Rutgers University in environmental policy and a master's of art. Degree from Montclair State University in elementary education. I also have my supervisor and principal certificates. Certifications. Clifton holds a special place in my heart and I love my job. Community activism and reactive research are important to me and. This report is sent in good faith. A disclaimer was placed in the report stating that this solely my opinions and ideas. I hope this report will be discussed and published so all stakeholders can start discussing and thinking about how we will reopen. I have been in Clifton for six years and I want to applaud all the wonderful changes that have occurred in this school year. I have never felt more motivated and valued as an educator. I am truly. I am truly staying proud and I thank all of you for your hard and dedicated work. And so I will share what he sent to me with all the board and any necessary stakeholders. Last is Mr. Joe Tanzero at sixty two Rabkin Drive. He writes, I am curious why other neighboring districts are able to conduct virtual classroom sessions led by. Teachers for three to four hours per day, but Clifton is unable to do so. The other districts have, in some cases, provided tablets or other devices to students in order to ensure equal access. The current model is unsustainable for parents and insufficient for our children. That concludes the public comments.
Dr. Robert Tozzi.
Ms. Danny, thank you. If I could ask Ms. Kusilevich to to address that public comment the best that she can, please.
Thank you, Dr. Robert Tozzi. As we described in the budget just now, we have gone one to one at the high school. And thank goodness we have because that allows our high school students to be able to continue with all of their credit bearing courses. That being said, the current budget does allow us to increase that one to one. In grades three through eight, moving forward in the coming school year. That being said, all districts are at different phases of this type of one to one implementation. Our teachers have done a phenomenal job because we've created a parallel system. There is a fully online system that students can interact with approximately three hours a day. But it is also asynchronous because we are sensitive to the fact that many of our families are sharing a computer. Or parents are not necessarily home. We don't know if parents are essential workers or healthcare providers are not with their children and their children are with grandma. Or with a babysitter who would not be able to monitor their learning. We've created our system in such a way that there are options. We have a parallel packet system, grades K through eight. Where parents can work and students can work out of a paper packet that follows our standards. And it does provide the required instruction as per the plan that has been approved by the Department of Education. At the same time, there is also our plan for online learning. Where students interact with a number of things, some live online classes with teachers. Mixed with our online programs that our students are familiar and comfortable with using. For example, Myon Reader, Imagine Math, Study Island, Pearson, among others. As I said, every school district is at a different phase of one to one implementation in terms of devices. And as Dr. Robert Tozzi shared a moment ago. Although we're only one to one at the high school. We are reaching out to those most needy families that have minimal to no. to no connectivity and trying to provide support, uh, to them so that they can more fully participate. But the paper packets also suffice, um, and we're working very hard. Our teachers are reaching out to all of our students at every grade level, um, repeatedly throughout the week to ensure student engagement and to keep this as stress-free as possible for the students and their parents in these uncertain times when we really don't know what a family is going through. Um, so we want to make it as easy as we can for you.
Thank you, Ms. Kusilevich. Next order of business is education and administration. EA one through EA four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Casper.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Abadrabo. Can I have, um, my vice president, Madam Chair, um, read Teacher Appreciation Day?
Yes, absolutely. Um, EA four thirty twenty, Teacher Appreciation Day. Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds and whereas our country's future depend upon providing quality education to all students. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and educating students and performing community service. And whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the community, the children of this community, now therefore be it resolved that Clifton Board of Education proclaims the week of May fourth, two thousand and twenty to be Teacher Pre-A appreciation Week and be it further resolved that the Clifton Board of Education strongly encourage is all members of our community to join with it in personally, uh, encouraging all members of our community to join with it personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Mr. Smith, can I have you read number two EA, um, four thirty twenty National School Nurse Day?
Mr. Smith, you're on mute. There you go.
Okay, whereas students are the future and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas family deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they are at school. And whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in the school setting. And whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has emphasized the essential role school nurses play in student health and academic success. And whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than a hundred years. And whereas school nurses address the home and community factors that impact students' health. And whereas school nurses act as liaison to the school community, families and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. And whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak. And whereas school nurses are members of a school-based team. And whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make positive difference for children every day. Therefore, be resolved that the National Association of School Nurses celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses everywhere and their efforts of meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools and other, and offers gratitude for the nation's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn and keeping parents and guardians at work, not just on this National School Nurse Day, but at every opportunity throughout the year. Be it further resolved that the Clifton Board of Education recognizes May sixth as School Nurses Day and strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it personally, expressing appreciation to our nurses for their dedication and devotion to their work.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do any board members have any questions, comments, concerns? Seen none, roll call?
Mr. Drabo stepped away. Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Pacenti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Danny?
Yes. Next order of business, personnel. Can I get a motion for P one through P seven?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Casper?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Bassford. Is that who said it? I wasn't. Sorry, okay. Um, questions, comments? Seen none, roll call?
Mr. Abadrabo, Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Pacenti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Danny?
Yes. Next order of business, finance and facilities. Can I get a motion for F one through F six?
I'll move them.
Motion by Mr. Daley. Second by Mr. Casper.
Mr. Pacenti.
Oh, who was it? Mr. Pacenti was the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so, sorry, Mr. Was. Motion by Mr. Pacenti, second by Mr. Casper. Questions, comments? Seen none, roll call?
One. Drabo?
Yes.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Pacenti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Danny?
Yes.
Motion scary.
Next order of business, board member comments. I'm trying to remember who had gone first, last. I think it was, I think it was Mr. Canova, correct? Yes. Okay. So it'll be Mr. Daley? Your first today?
Yes. Uh, I'll be, uh, very brief. Um, I had my comments under the budget, uh, just letting everybody know that, um, uh, we're, we're very likely going to be saddled with some changes that we have to do, but that's going to be in a couple of months. The, these are things we, um, know are coming, but have no idea what the content is. Um, outside of that, I'd like to congratulate everybody. I do have comments, but, uh, I'll probably save them for the next board meeting because they have to do with some of our litigation. Um, but I do want, don't want to comment unless we have discussion in our executive session. But I wish everybody be safe. Uh, do your best to, uh, to survive under these conditions. We all have a challenge. Some have bigger challenges than others. Uh, we're all empathetic and, uh, some of us are living through them, some of us are aware of them. So, uh, wish you all the best and just, uh, just stay warm and comfortable and civil to each other the best you can, uh, while you're inside. Uh, the good news is that, uh, I understand parks and golf courses are opening up on Saturday, but, uh, please maintain your social distance. We don't want to have the governor do a one-eighty because people are not behaving themselves. Uh, we all have a responsibility here. Uh, we all want to get out and if we want to stay out, uh, we have to practice our social, social distancing and be aware that no matter where you are. So, uh, we don't have a reversion to what we're going through now. Uh, all the best to everybody and God bless.
Mr. Casper, thank you, Mr. Daley.
Okay, I'll, I'll, mind short. Um, I'd like to thank Mrs. Kusilevich and Mr. Usee for, uh, job well done in another presentation. Thank you for all your hard work. Um, I'd also like to thank our retirees, uh, for their hard work and dedication that they, for the many years, uh, they put in, uh, with us here in the Clifton School District. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week, uh, Happy Nurses Day, and that'll lead me into, uh, thanking all of our healthcare workers and our first responders once again. Uh, please know that we all are thinking of you and we all like to thank you for all of your hard work in this, uh, in this pandemic. Uh, and please know it's a special thanks to everyone that's helping us, uh, during this, uh, critical time. Uh, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Mr. Pacenti?
Uh, just to be very brief tonight, um, just want to thank everybody, um, here for the support that, uh, this board's given and our community's given. Uh, again, thank the teachers and our staff, administration, and also the parents. Um, like I said last time, we didn't know what we're in for. We still don't. I know it's been a bunch of weeks now and everybody's pulling through to do the best that they can. So I really appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Casper, thank you, uh, for that, uh, very nice card that you sent us. Um, we really appreciate it. Teachers Association, thank you for the food. Uh, we've been, we've fed pretty well at work. Um, but this definitely has to end, so please keep your social distancing, stay home because it's getting tiring out there and, uh, we need to just, uh, normal basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacenti. Mr. Smith?
Uh, yes, uh, Mrs. Kuzilevich and, uh, Mr. Usee, um, I echo, uh, our superintendent's, uh, remarks on what a fantastic job, uh, both of you did on your presentation tonight. Uh, it's a difficult presentation to do, uh, in any, uh, format, but they have to do it online and, uh, through this measure, uh, is a great, uh, testament to you. Um, also to, um, Mr. Eric Mountain, uh, for all his work that him and his, uh, crew have done, um, uh, and putting all of our social learning, um, and our meetings and all technology, uh, items that they have put, uh, together in a very short period of time. Uh, they truly need to be commended, uh, for a great job and, uh, I know there's many districts that are far behind, behind what Clifton does in technology. So, uh, I credit you, Mr. Mountain and your team. Mr. Daley, I'm going to echo on what you said. Um, uh, we have no idea what's ahead of us, uh, as far as budgets go and, um, budgetary items and money and et cetera. Um, but I credit this board. Um, before I actually got on, you guys had completed the budget and had come up with, um, a no-tax increase. So I credit each of you for doing that, for coming back to the taxpayers and, uh, uh, telling them that we'll try and work with what we have, but not giving you a, a tax increase, um, was a great move by the board and, uh, I commend the board for doing that. Um, but again, we don't know what's ahead of us. Um, the governor did say today, however, um, one thing that he did say about education today, um, there was a question about, um, in New York, they are considering waiving the hundred and eighty-day requirement, um, or so the person who presented the question said. Um, so they asked our governor, would, would, uh, he consider also doing that in New Jersey? And, uh, he basically just point-blank came out and said, no, that, um, in New Jersey, we will be fulfilling, uh, the rest of our school year. The, uh, it's just up in the air now whether it's going to be, uh, at home or in our school building. So, um, so just so we know, we're going to be fulfilling the hundred and eighty days. Um, I'd just like to finish the rest of my comments by, uh, recognizing and commending the people who do a great job every Monday, Wednesday and Friday in our district to make sure that the students in our district, uh, are fed. Uh, they get their, their lunch and their breakfast. Um, they can take for the, uh, days that we're not giving it out Tuesday and Thursday. Um, it's a tremendous, uh, job to be able to do and, uh, our district, I think, does it better than, than anyone and I've been there to see it, how it operates and works. And, uh, I'm just going to quickly go through a list of people that I'd just like to commend if I should forget anybody. Um, it is truly done on mistake and that's why I really don't like going through names, but I'd just like to thank everybody. But again, starting out at the top with our superintendent and our assistant superintendents, um, for their great job, for our administrator, Mark, uh, Jengaro, who is overseeing all of it, um, and, uh, for Pomtonian, uh, Food Services, um, who has had to do something that they've never done before and seem to be doing a great job at. So I, um, I compliment them and for all the custodians in each of the buildings where it's being given out, um, especially where, uh, Alex Rosenberg, uh, who coordinates it all from the high school end of it. But quickly, again, like to thank all those people from our staff that volunteer to give out the, um, maybe not volunteer, but who give out the, uh, food items to, uh, to everyone that, uh, is interested in receiving those food items on Monday, Wednesday and Fridays from School Two. Jennifer Lucas, School Four, Joelle Rosetti, School Nine, Bracken Healy, School Twelve, Rose Kenning, School Thirteen, uh, Rachel Capizzi, School Fourteen, Terrace Petram, School Sixteen, Joanna Jarbay, School Seventeen, Rafael Matos, CCMS, Vanessa Gaba, Andrew Yeager, Woodrow Wilson, Joe Mankin, High School, Mike Doctor, Ahmad Hendon, Susan Schneff, Victoria Rogers, Megan Conti, supervisors, uh, Samantha DeRose, Heather Rotolo, Frankie Rosa, Jessica Tremble, Lindsay Oslin, Linda Chavez and, uh, Thomas Mulvaney. And, um, again, the custodial staff, um, and from, uh, Seela A., Marilyn Tor- Torley and Marissa Papa Marcos and School Seventeen, Laura Zagorsky. To all of you and all that I may have forgotten on this list or wasn't given the names on this list, we thank you, uh, and anyone who doesn't know by now, any Monday, Wednesday or Friday from ten AM to eleven thirty AM, you can go to, uh, Clifton High School, Christopher Columbus Middle School and School Number Seventeen and pick up, um, breakfast and lunch, um, for each student. So, um, so that nobody in our town is going hungry. None of our students are going hungry. Thank you to all for a great program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Abadrabo?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, to encompass what Mr. Smith just said, thank you. Thank you to all. It's Clifton. It's what Clifton has been. It's what Clifton is. It's what Clifton will be. You know, we have to shift what roles had been in the classroom to now at home and a lot of faculty administrators have to be, had to be repurposed for what the, the normalities and the abnormalities what is today. So I want to thank everybody. I'm going to, I'm going to quickly cheat a little bit because I'm monitoring questions as people are writing them on Facebook. Um, so I'm going to indirectly answer them in my commissioners. So I'm going to indirectly answer them in my commissioners' comments. So people ask me, when are you going back to school? I mean, at this point, we're end of April going into May, governor keeps moving amended dates. Speaking for myself, don't hold your breath. But now, obviously, you know, our administration, our superintendent, my colleagues on the board, we're all discussing what if, what and what could be. Whether it's summer, whether it's our seniors, whether September, whether it's January 1st, we don't know what is to come. So for parents to ask us when we open schools again, if we were the governor, I think we'd give you an answer right away. But unfortunately, we are not. Well, fortunately, in this case, we're not because I don't want to make decisions that he's making. So that's in that aspect. Laptops or the Chromebooks, if you need them, if you have more kids at home than you do of laptops, you shouldn't, you're right, you should not have the you should not have to make that decision. Do I get a laptop for my kid or do I put food on my table for my kids? Again, as the superintendent said, it is something we've discussed. It is something that we recommend to the parents to approach our administration and approach superintendent in terms of how can we help you on a needs base and what we have in our caliber. The one-to-one initiative helps a lot. Listen, the state increase helps with the 20% where there's some money that comes out of charter schools, but the best thing out of it, and thank you to the finance committee for putting this together, no tax increase. It was before all this happened and the fact that all this is coming around while the pandemic has occurred, I think could not have fit better for this city and this board because everything is just moving into supporting everything we need to do and get done now. And I'm going to leave us last. Today was a Janina and Mike show. And I've said it to you before, I'll say it again. Thank you. Thank you for what you guys do. Day in, day out. Thank you for putting the budgets. Janina, I know you're out there always on those Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Danny, our superintendent, I know you are too. You're a great leader. You know, I appreciate you. I say this to you all the time, every time I talk to you, because honestly, not too many people appreciate what we have at the helm of the ship. At the end of the day, get it, ship, Buccaneers. But at the end of the day, listen, it's I'm just thankful. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abitraal. Mr. Canova?
Good evening. I'm also going to make my comments short. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I want to welcome Mr. Tomeskevich. Is that how you pronounce your name? Is that right?
It's Thomas Havich. Thank you.
Tomeskevich, okay. Welcome to Clifton. High performing district. No, here's another feather in our cap for Clifton. High performing district. And I remember when Janina told this to us a while ago, she'd said that even if one point or would have been deducted from us, we wouldn't have been able to get this. So, you know, it's just tremendous feat that they were able to come in and see that we do what we do and we do it well. And then no points were deducted and we were able to get this accomplishment. So thank you. Talking a little about the state aid, yes, we don't know what's going to happen there. We don't know. We don't have that crystal ball to talk about the future. We don't know what's going to happen with grants. You know, we don't know a lot of things. So you know, there are, this is definitely rocky waters here. We're going to have to see what happens if it comes out from the state. So we're going to have to be very vigilant and work with them and see what we could do. But as to what Fahim said, you know, we did come out with a 0% increase and it was planned even before any of this. So definitely hats off to our board for getting this out, being physically conservative, making sure that we have what we need within the current budget. Someone did mention about the internet and I know Dr. Robert Tozzi touched on it a little bit. But one of the pre-works, it's the online learning is, one is that you have an internet, right? So you need something at home where you could connect to, connect with. The other thing is a device. And a lot of people, whether you believe it or not, they don't have those things, right? So for those, we do have the packets, as he mentioned, and there are alternative methods. Would we like to be one-to-one? Absolutely. I think I mentioned it last meeting. Of course, we want to be one-to-one, but there are always budget constraints as well. So I was glad to see in this budget how we're addressing all of our members in the school from grades three up so they could have a one-to-one initiative for devices. And the third thing to online learning, which no one really talks about, is a strict time management and dedication. Because it's very easy to look at that TV and go there and turn it on or to go to that refrigerator and get some snacks and forget about your schoolwork. So that's where our parents come in. That's where our teachers have come in. Having these chat rooms live online for our students, calling them. So that's greatly appreciated because that keeps the kids engaged. That keeps them talking to their friends at school. That keeps them still in line with schooling. So thank you for that. There was something I saw online where they mentioned, you know, especially in these times. They said, if you wake up in the morning and you at least make your bed, it's at least one task completed. And from there, it'll snowball and you'll do the next thing and the next thing and the next thing. So we need to make sure that, you know, our kids are getting up and doing those things. Make your bed, brush your teeth, get up, get ready. You may have nowhere to go, but you know, you'll feel better about yourself, you know? Take a shower. They said even exercising. We all know it's very easy to just put on Netflix and watch a whole binge watch a whole series of whatever it is that's out nowadays. And they said, at least if you tell yourself, I'm going to at least do one push-up, one sit-up. What you'll likely do is you'll likely do 10 of those, 20 of those, 30 of those. At least if you get yourself in the mode to do those things, then you'll start to feel more normal. So I tell everyone, make sure you set goals at the beginning of the day. Make sure you achieve those goals. Even if they're small goals, because it'll set you forward for the rest of the day, for the rest of the term, for the rest of your life even. So make sure you're doing those things, whether we're in COVID-19 or we're not, you should be doing these things anyway. So it's good practice now. And the benefit to doing them now is when we get out of this thing, you're going to be that much stronger than anyone who hasn't. So make sure that you stay dedicated and you stay the course. And just keep up social distancing, as Mr. Daly said, you know, it's important. We're all in this together. And if you have any issues, obviously reach out to any of us, reach out to your neighbors, your friends. Because everyone that I see is very involved and they are very concerned about others in the neighborhood. That's all my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canova. Madam Vice Chair.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank all the community members that submitted questions tonight. It's really good to see that people are engaged and from near and far. And I can't wait to see Mr. Tesolino's comprehensive report that he submitted. I'm looking forward to that as well. I'd like to thank Janina for her work on the New Jersey CUSAC. I know that's when they come in, everybody takes a really deep breath and when they leave the building, everybody sighs a big sigh and we all when they leave and it's something that we all, it's like, huh, thank God. Mr. Usee and his staff, thank you very much. I'm looking down at my screen because that's where I see the box where he's at. Mr. Casper, I will have that report amended to have your name put in. So I'm sorry and I didn't mean that. To the CTA and Lori Lamanna, thank you very much for feeding the first responders and St. Mary's and for the iPads. It's a lot to those families in a very desperate time. I just, you know, it's really means a lot to people that you don't realize one little piece of technology. We're going through something really in our lifetime that, you know, we really never thought that we'd ever see. But thanks to technology, we're all meeting here. If we didn't have this, we wouldn't be able to have our meeting. So I just, I have to tell everybody that Frank and I have been doing something at night at 8 o'clock. We go live on Facebook and we say a simple prayer. We do the Lord's Prayer. And we've been researching other prayers and people, it's kind of catching on now, right, Frank? And we have a little bit of a following. So Robin Gibson's doing it tonight. I think she did it at 8 o'clock. So we got a little bit of a circle, but I have to announce, we lost one of our Clifton High grads from 2008. And he's our neighbor, Gary. We lost Carlos Moran. And he fought a battle for three years of a devastating disease. He was a national champion of jujitsu. He was a school five grad. He was a Woodrow Wilson grad and he was a graduate of 2008. He graduated with my daughter. He had a, he was a father and a husband and he was our neighbor down the block. So rest in peace, Carlos. Very sorry to his family and his dad down the block. So I'm sorry to his classmates as well, to everybody that we lost this week and to the families that are struggling. I wish you peace and to find some struggling, find some comfort in whatever you do. Stay safe, social distance. May 10th is Mother's Day. We won't meet before then, so Happy Mother's Day. It's going to be hard because a lot of people won't be able to be around their mothers. I know it's going to be rough in my house. I won't be able to see my daughter. We'll have to come up with something creative. Maybe we'll drive out to Long Island. But I just want to wish to all the mothers out there, Happy Mother's Day. To everybody on the board who's a mother, Happy Mother's Day. Stay safe, stay away from each other, wear your mask outside. I know it's cumbersome, but we all have to do it. So thank you, everybody. Oh, and to the community. This board, even though we look like, we look like we're in grids and we're all in little boxes. They have spent countless hours at meetings, their own time, different hours of the day, meeting everybody in these boxes. And I thank every one of them for putting the time, the energy and efforts for this community. They've really rolled up their sleeves to make sure that this is working in a positive way. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Usee, and to your team for putting together the presentation for everything that you do. So comprehensive. Ms. Kusilevich, as always, so detailed and wonderful. Nice job. Welcome, Mr. Tomeskevich.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, Ms. Lori Lalama. Again, you always cease to amaze me in difficult times. Times you just seem to bring it together and do something for the good of the community. It's always great. So thank you very much for that. I'd like to say Happy Teacher Appreciation Day, Happy National School Nurses Day. And I did attend the virtual National Honor Society and it was very interesting. And I'm glad that we were able to do that virtually for the students. Again, would have been nice in person, but it is something that they'll remember for the rest of their lives that it was something different. So I'd like to say congratulations to all of them. And also as well, thank you to all those who are working to serve the public at this time. You know, it's again, very, very difficult and we really appreciate the sacrifices that you make. And I want to say Happy Mother's Day as well, because I know that we won't meet until after Mother's Day. And it'll be very difficult, obviously, because people have to social distance. But maybe you can take it as a time to do a Zoom or something. I'm brushing up on my technology skills. And last but not least, I do have to say, because he's my biggest fan, biggest supporter, if you know him, you know how he is. Tomorrow is my dad's birthday. Happy birthday, Stanley Kwalik. Thank you, Ms. Casper. Dr. Robert Tozzi?
Thank you, Ms. Danny, commissioners and members of the community. I'll reiterate a lot of what was already said tonight and maybe add some new things, hopefully. But first, again, to Mr. Usee, thank you for putting together that budget presentation. Outstanding job. I don't know that people realize the ins and outs of everything that goes into a $202 million budget. So thank you and your staff. And Ms. Kusilevich was the leader of CUSAC. For lack of a better term, CUSAC is our district report card. The New Jersey Department of Education monitors school districts. And not only did we get a passing grade, but we've been designated as high performing. And it's really, really something that is to be celebrated. It's a testament to our faculty and staff and our administration coming together and doing what we know is the right thing to do. I'd like to recognize on the agenda tonight, the board accepted the retirements of two of our principals. Mr. Puozzo and Ms. Letzoni. And I just want to thank them for their years of service to our district. It's rare when you get two principals retiring at the same time. Both have dedicated their lives to Clifton. To our, being a building leader is the most difficult job in the district. So I want to thank you for your service. Thank you for your dedication to our kids and wish you all the best in your retirement. Tomorrow is National Principals Day. So I want to say Happy National Principals Day to all of our principals who have been leading this new way of learning, who are constantly on call to our teachers, who have been attending more Google meetings than you ever want to know about. So thank you for being the leaders that you are. You are the instructional leaders of your building. And I want to thank you for all that you do for our district. Some good news to share. Just a week or so ago, maybe two weeks ago, we received notification that Clifton was named one of the top communities for music education in the entire United States of America, which is a great accomplishment. It's something that I think we all knew that in Clifton, we value music education. But it's nice to be recognized by the NAMM Foundation as one of the top communities for music education in our entire country. So congratulations to our faculty, staff, and administration that made that happen. On Monday, we'll begin our remote registration process. Of course, there are still people moving into Clifton that need to register for schools for this year and people who will want to register for next year. On Monday, instructions will be posted on our website for those people who need information on remote registration, which we'll be doing online. I'm hoping that by our next board meeting, which is scheduled for May 21st, that we have some more guidance from the governor and the state regarding the potential of schools being closed for the rest of the year. I know that the governor has closed us through May 15th, so I expect that we'll know something more by May 21st. And that way we can have, I can have more updates for the community end of the year events like graduation and how we're going to be, you know, doing those things in an online world and trying to provide, you know, a program for our students, especially our seniors who are leaving during this pandemic. I also expect that on May 21st, I'll hope to have a plan for the use of our snow days. We have four snow days that were not used that will be given back. And hopefully by May 21st, if not by the June 3rd meeting, we'll have a plan on how to utilize those days. But the idea would be to, the general idea would be to take those days off the end of the school year and end the school year early. Want to wish all of our high school students who are going to be taking the AP test on May 11th, I want to wish them all luck. The AP test is the advanced placement test. Those are, our students are taking advanced placement classes for college credit. The AP test has gone online this year. So our students will be, you know, doing it in a new environment and I just want to wish them all luck. They've worked hard to get to this point. And I'm sure that you will do great. And finally, recently, parents of children with IEPs in our district received a consent form for the delivery of live stream related services. And it's come to my attention, and there was some news publicity about that it was, there were some misunderstandings that came to my attention. And I just want to try to clear up any confusion regarding this form that was sent out. The intent was just to get parents' consent to deliver services, related services remotely. Prior to this pandemic, it was not allowed. The New Jersey Department of Education did not allow services to be done remotely. So the idea was just to get parents' consent and also to explain to parents that there are some inherent dangers in doing online related services and potential issues of privacy violations. And we want to be aware of that. In no way did we mean to alarm any parents or confuse any parents. If that was the case, please accept my apology. I want to make sure that all of our parents know that no child has or will be denied any IEP-related services if they do not fill out that consent form. So I just want to be clear about that. And if anybody has any questions, you can reach out to me directly. So I just want to be clear about that and if anybody has any questions, you can reach out to me directly or to your child's case manager. Finally, I hope that everyone in our community is healthy and safe and hopefully we can all get back to normal as soon as possible. Thank you to Mr. Pascanti and our first responders out there, our police officers, the fire department and medical professionals. Thank you. You're out there on the front lines every day and I know it hasn't been easy, so thank you all and have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Robert Tozzi. Next order of business is new business. Does anyone have any new business? Okay, seen none. Next order of business is executive session. And Ms. Gutierrez, if you can take over at this point and also introduce Mr. Perry, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Danny. We're going to be going into executive session to discuss pending litigation negotiations. And with us tonight is my partner, Perry Laddi Budair. He's going to be talking to the board about some pending litigation. There is, it is not expected, there's no action to be expected that's going to happen at the end of the meeting, so we'll be done after the executive session is over.
And we will adjourn in executive session.
Correct.
Okay. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So move, second.
Motion by Mr. Casper, second was by Mr. Abitraal?
Yes, sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm staying.
How about a pass?